All right, it is 6 o'clock. So in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E, the following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN2, and WRHI. Welcome, everybody. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining. For those who are watching online, we are not live streaming. We are recording. We had some technical difficulties, so this is being recorded and will be put out on the district website just as soon as possible. You have all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
Negative.
And that will stand as approved. Ms. Pettis, do we have any public participation? We do not have any public participation. All right, then we're going to jump into one great big set of topics. Staff reports having to do with reading of a lot of policies, although I would say minor adjustments in most cases, but there's been an ongoing review of our policies. We do this every year. A lot of these were actually underway even before COVID, and so we're coming back to sort of close out this section. So Ms...oh, Liza's going to do these. Okay, sorry. I was thinking it was Marty, so I'm looking at you. Come on up and help walk us through all this.
Well, good evening. As you mentioned, Ms. Spears, we began the review of the personnel policies within Section G for Personnel approximately a year ago, and I felt like we did a pretty good job. We were able to pretty much get through about half of those. And so, of course, the year has...in the past year, we had a lot of other areas take priority. So we're back to reviewing the remaining policies that have been presented as a part of your board docs in your packet. So I'd like to take this opportunity to kind of share with you some of the updates and recommendations that we have for you and our committee, including Marty, Michelle, and I in these reviews. So I believe before you have approximately...I believe there are exactly 16 policies. I'd like to just start with calling to your attention Policy GCC, GCCR, and GDC and GDCR. And these sets of policies are covering information having to do with our professional staff leaves and absences, as well as our support staff or classified staff support leaves and absences. In your review of these policies, just wanted to highlight quickly that what we've decided is we have adopted the model from the South Carolina School Boards Association as our recommendation with a few updates to those, the main of which are that we, in our district in Fort Mill, instead of 90 days, we allow it to 120 days of accumulated sick leave for our staff. So that was, I think, for both sets of those policies, we made the update from 90 to 120. And then the other part of some of our recommendations for these policies would be to strike out in the model policy, we do not and have not, in my years here, we have not accepted the transfer of out-of-state sick leave from other districts. We do accept all in-state transfer of sick leave. So our recommendation was to remove that from the model policy. And then this afternoon, we also made a change that you may or may not have seen where an oversight on my part was we needed to add bereavement leave as a section of leave under personal emergency, legal, and bereavement. So the bereavement policy that we currently have in place, that would remain in place as well.
Can you overview the changes that the model policy would have over our current
So it would be the advancement of the leave.
The advancement, so when I start day one, I get all my yearly leave?
Correct. And so that is on page one of you, if you refer to GCC and GDC as well. On page one of those policies, that is middle of the way down, the district will advance annual sick leave and annual and all forms of leave is advanced now.
Typically industry standard, but that's what we do in my firm. I don't know how others would, but it seems to me...
I think we've been in practice doing this for about six years, but we did not have that as a part of the policy. And the reason that we felt we would, and it was a part of the model from the school board as well, is that we do often see employees who separate prior to the end of the contract year, and many have exhausted all of their leave days. So what happens is in their final adjustments, their final adjustment or payout, we're having to account for days that employees have been paid for, but they truly have not earned because the policy indicates that sick leave is earned at a day and a quarter for each month that you work. So we've had more of these situations come up that we felt like we needed to now include it in policy, just so that employees are aware that if you should separate before the end of your contract, that your final payout may need to be adjusted if you've taken more leave than you truly earned.
Ms. McGary, did you...are you talking right now also about Policy ARGCC? Or when you listed the policy, I wasn't sure if you were on that policy yet or not.
GC...GCC and GDC.
So on GCC, that one, we're adopting the new model on that one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, and the way you can tell what we've done is the new...
It says model.
Well, whatever we're changing or adopting as ours is highlighted in yellow. That's what we have changed, and you'll see the strikeouts of what was before. So when you look at our original GCC, everything that's striked out is what used to be, and now we've got the new based on what it was. But then we also tweaked for, this is how we practice, this is how we actually operate. So we adjusted accordingly where that's concerned.
Adjusted the model.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got a question on the recognition of accumulated leave. So if I understand what you said right, if a teacher comes from Clover to Fort Mill and they have 90 days of accumulated leave in the Clover School District, we would recognize that. So we would also advance 90 days, or you would have a 90-day bank.
Well, if you...yes, correct. So if you did have 90 in Clover, we would transfer that in, and then you would be advanced for your first year of work. If you're a teacher, a 190, you know, 12 days of sick leave for the year. So you would start the year with, you know, 90 plus 12.
Is that a South Carolina transfer only? A North Carolina with 90 wouldn't start. They start with zero.
Well, that's why I...
It's optional.
What is the reason for that? You know, if it was Mecklenburg County, then...that's why I wasn't wanting to understand the rule, then we would not recognize...if it was the same situation, except the Mecklenburg County teacher, the teacher does not get the recognized leave.
And the reason for that is, we've discussed this with legal a few times, just to kind of get a gauge from our attorneys. It's optional as a district if you want to honor or accept the leave from another state, but most districts do not, because again, it's not a requirement. It's not a state statute. It is a state statute if you're a, you know, government or state agency that you must, within South Carolina, you must allow the employee to transfer the leave. So again, it is optional, and the board could elect to make that change.
Put that to hard numbers. Let's use easy numbers, and let's say each day is $250 a day, just easy numbers. That's $22,500 that it costs the district to accept or acknowledge or give those extra days from somewhere else. That's a huge...I mean, that's a huge expense. Do that times 22,000 times 500. Do that times 40 teachers, when we've got 2,000. Let's say 40 teachers, that's $900,000.
Right. I guess the point...the reason I'm asking would, if we did...because I know it's easier, I believe, contract-wise, especially in the middle of the year, to hire a teacher from North Carolina that's under current contract than South Carolina. Please correct me if I'm wrong. So wouldn't that be an additional incentive to bring in teachers, especially from North Carolina, especially since we're on the border, to say, hey, we do this? Wouldn't it give us another leg up in our recruiting efforts?
It may. I can tell you that I have not ever been asked that question from a candidate that's coming to Fort Mill from Charlotte.
I know that.
Just an example.
If it doesn't matter, that's fine. But if it's a recruiting benefit, then why don't we change it in policy and say, hey, look, come over here, because we're going to honor that? And that's an additional leg up for us to...I mean, because teachers are in shorter and shorter supply. And North Carolina is a nice source, Union County, right? We're all right around each other. Columbia won't matter. I could see Columbia. Who cares, right? Because if they're going to go...usually you're going to move within your geographic region. Somebody can live in Mecklenburg County, come work in Fort Mill fairly easily. Would it give us a recruiting advantage?
I don't know. I can honestly tell you, I have never been asked that question, like, hey, would you all consider honoring my leave? You know, I'm riding the fence on this offer from this principal. I could see it as a positive, definitely, for a candidate. I will say that the question I do receive about teachers coming to us from other states is about the retirement transfer of years of service and being vested. And so that, I think, is something we hear more about. But I'm certain that it would be an attractive, I mean, perk to offer, you know, or to honor. It is...it's a big investment.
But it's expensive.
It's a big investment, but it's certainly one that we could...the board could consider for sure.
It's one of the only...it's kind of one of some of the only ways that we can. I'd be in favor of it.
But at $1 million, because I'm...her head's going to explode. I'm already ready for this. I'm ready. At $1 million, how many teachers are you going to forego hiring because you need to protect $1 million in leave time? If you're offering that. And are you only offering that to new hires, or are you now going to retro that to anyone that we've hired up to now? That's a very slippery slope to get on.
I don't think you could go in the...I don't think you could go backward on how you would administratively do that, but certainly I could think it could be used as a recruiting tool.
That's a million-dollar recruiting tool.
Potentially, maybe not. Maybe it's used a handful of times.
It just says if...that's what I guess some districts have said, they will put a cap. If they do accept out-of-state leave, they will cap it at a certain number.
Ah, okay.
So that's a little better. That's a 6,000. So now you're talking about competing with a retention bonus that Raquel is offering. You've exceeded that if that's...but theirs is a retention bonus, not a recruiting bonus.
I guess what I would say is teacher recruitment and retention is definitely an important topic. And I remember, gosh, it's probably been a year and a half now because of COVID time, in the strategic plan, there was some conversation about what the best strategies were for that. I don't know that this ever came up as one of those best strategies, but I think that it's an important topic that we want to address. If you find in your analysis that this needs to be changed, then we could always consider changing it. But I think the overall topic of should we offer bonuses? What kind of bonuses? How much would those bonuses be? Is it moving expenses? Is it...you know, what is it? And if this comes to be the thing that we want to offer, great, let's throw it in there. But I wouldn't jump to that conclusion just because we're on this policy right now, because that analysis hasn't been done.
And I guess the reason I'm talking about it is because you're talking about recruiting within the surrounding counties versus just...Charlotte's closer than Clover for in a lot of respects, and so why would it be really any different? If you're talking about Clover versus a Mecklenburg employee, I just don't see that big of a difference, teacher.
But it wouldn't only apply to Charlotte, it would apply to Ohio, too, and New York.
No, we could carve out Mecklen...we could carve out North Carolina.
I don't think...
Mecklenburg.
I can choose if you're going to accept out of state.
Sure you can. No, you could carve out anything you want in policy, as long as it's not illegal, immoral, or otherwise. You don't have a problem with it.
Let us confirm with legal, the 24 days, is that...if that option is part of the statute or if there's more information there and what some other districts are doing, and come back when we come for the second reading.
I was thinking it's probably in statute, or other people would be considering what Brian's talking about, because it's a good recruiting...
We need to back to that.
Okay.
It seems like low-hanging fruit.
Or hold it, you know, hold it for all the policy to add labor like I suggested.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. And then moving to GCCR, the administrative rule for professional staff leaves and absences. I don't know if you had any questions in what you reviewed within this policy, but within it, what we modified here was we, as you said, the strike-throughs of paragraph one, we no longer require staff to require paper or hard copy statements when they're absent. We use software, ASOP. You may all be familiar, have heard of ASOP. That's our absence management system. So the first paragraph was no longer really a part of our normal or regular practice. Now we require that employees enter their leave or their need to be absent in the absence management system. So that was the change reflected there. And then under verification and use of sick leave, we made a modification there recommending the next-to-last paragraph, the staff member's immediate supervisor doesn't request documentation after 10 or more days have been taken. That falls under the HR with our FMLA and our lead coordinator, Ms. Hartley. So the HR department is really reaching out to the employee and not the supervisor. Page two, the strike-through there within the middle of page two is in reference to determining eligibility for FMLA applications. And so we currently have been using for some time, we use a rolling 12-month period measured backward from the date the staff member wishes to begin the leave to determine the eligibility. So employees must have worked at least 1,250 hours in the year preceding their request to take extended leave under FMLA. So we designated...that's our process. Page three, within GCC-R, the modifications there that we've recommended in paragraph two towards the top, FMLA leave is unpaid, and we've just defined there that our district, we require that employees must use any accumulated paid leave time to run concurrent with their family medical leave absence. So it's not optional whether you want to receive pay or not. If you're out on FMLA, most districts require that you do use your paid leave that you have accumulated during that time. So we have detailed that as well. And then under spouses employed by the district, we cleaned up there. If you see in those next three paragraphs, we've indicated spouses as a general rule instead of husband and wife. Page four, there are no updates, or five, or six. The same updates that we applied to the professional staff leaves and absences policy, we've made and indicated for our support staff as well, GDC and GDCR. Right. Any further questions about that? Okay. The next, quickly moving to GCQE, retirement of professional staff. The recommended updates there, we just made some modifications. We added the People website so that folks can access that, know where...you know, know that it is the resource that outlines all information about retirement.
So one of the strike-throughs there was that it looks like there's no deadline now for them to let us know that, so...
Employees can retire at any time. They've always been able to. I think that was our request in the past. Please let us know, if at all possible, by March 15th, in preparation for April issuance of contracts. But that's not anything that can be enforced.
Okay.
So we just felt it was just appropriate to remove it.
But it is before signing of the next year's contract, so it...
No.
No. So they could sign the contract and then, you know, two days before school starts, retire.
Correct.
Or two days into school starting.
Right.
Happens a lot. Most of our employees do want to give us a heads up so that we can begin recruitment. All right, and then we need to remove the information about Terry. Of course, Terry ended in 2018, so that was another recommendation. Any other questions about that particular policy?
Yeah, I have a quick question for you. You mentioned, I don't want to...I don't want to get into the details of it, but just curious, when you say it happens a lot, what does that mean?
I would just say it's frequent. In my years here in Fort Mill, employees, whether they're in certified professional staff positions or classified support positions, were often posting and hiring due to notifications well into and even throughout July. Things, as you can imagine, personal lives of employees, things happen within their lives that, you know, we often hear, you know, I'm sorry I didn't notify you earlier, you know, this or, you know, this particular situation has occurred in my life or my family, and I've decided, as we know, that happened, I guess the word "a lot" comes from this past summer with dealing with COVID and staffing.
Yep.
We, you know, we had...we did receive a large number of short notice, retirement notices from our employees.
Thank you.
Yes. Welcome. Okay. Next policy, GCQFR, discipline suspension and dismissal of professional staff. The highlights that we shared with you all are the very last paragraph of that policy. You know, we laughed, our team, we laughed when we saw that this policy had language in it that included...it says, "This includes any action or conduct communicated or performed in person, electronically, and writing." Our recommendation was to just tweak that a little bit to say, "But not limited to telephone, cellphone, computer." We removed BlackBerry. We don't know if anybody even uses a BlackBerry anymore, but so we recommended that that be removed. And then we added social media platforms that any of these means, not limited to, but certainly those would be the most common. Any misuse or inappropriate use could result in disciplinary action up to dismissal.
Thank you very much for adding that piece. That's important. Thank you.
This one specifically is for professional staff. Is there a counterpart for classified and others?
Yes.
Okay.
Move forward there as well. And then page two of that policy, we just felt the read was more professional to kind of tweak that last sentence about the employee's professional effectiveness regarding this policy.
You didn't remove the ED on that, right? You...in the word determined?
Determined.
It looks like you crossed out the E, but you want to keep that in there, the ES?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving forward to next recommendation for slight update, Policy GDA, classified staff positions. And to be kind of in alignment with what we've kind of been doing is adding superintendent or designee, because as I think we all know, many times the superintendent is ultimately responsible for the carrying out of the policy that we are, as, you know, in our roles, designated to specifically kind of...
He doesn't write the detailed job descriptions of every...
He does not write the job descriptions.
Of every single one, by golly.
All those references to legal down there?
That's right. You make sure you're calling every single person's reference, too, while you're at it.
Yeah.
Moving forward to the next policy, GDB, classified staff contracts and compensation. We just cleaned up that language or verbiage a little bit under compensation. I think we felt like the former language or the current, excuse me, the current language within the policy is the board will set the salary schedules. And I think at Michelle's recommendation, and we agreed, the board will, you know, approve the salary schedules of all classified staff in conjunction with the annual budget process or presentation. So with that recommendation, we agreed, and that was the change recommended in that instance. All right, moving forward, the next policy, GDBC, and the administrative rule. This policy references classified staff supplementary pay and overtime. And for GDBC and the administrative rule, what I can tell you is these updates that we've highlighted and recommended are based on Fair Labor Standards Act provisions. So this is actually, we consulted with our payroll specialist when we met as a team, and these were the updates upon her review based on current payroll and pay law. Are there any particular questions about any of those highlights or changes? All right, the next policy again was GDC and GDCR, but of course, we've covered that in the first set when we combined it with professional staff leaves and absences. GDF be the next policy regarding support staff hiring. We've again adopted or recommended the adoption of the model policy within our state. And some of the just basic strike-throughs at the top, you see, we're just cleaning up some of the basic language. But what we did need to add to this model policy is kind of middle of the policy, we needed to add, "All offers of employment are contingent upon successful completion of a criminal background check that is satisfactory as determined by the superintendent."
Do we need to add or designate there, too?
I was wondering, no.
Yes, certainly. That's good. Good question.
And actually, you have superintendent a couple of times in that policy.
Okay.
That you'll...if you don't mind, just adding or designate after that. I think it's two paragraphs below that, the paragraph below that.
We actually had the discussion that we have someone who was a paralegal who is accustomed to kind of finding that kind of thing and going through our section and adding the as does or designate, and then also adding, because we have reviewed this entire section, so all of Policy G to go down where you see at the bottom, it has, when it's been put into a place, and this is not a good one because it doesn't show you the history, but there's policy where you can see when it was last reviewed, when it was issued, and so on, that we were going to add. So you've got, like, adopted, it was revised, reviewed, and we're going to add the date so that we know and the public knows that we've actually touched all policies.
Thank you. We'll take a look at that and insert designate where it's needed. Thank you. Next, GDJ and GDJR. We discussed this at length within our group, and of course, Policy GDJ is regarding classified staff assignments and transfers. Currently, in our conversations, we felt that the changes that needed to be made to this policy, kind of in our experiences over the years with opening new schools and staff reassignment, that the process for reassigning classified staff, most of the time our classified staff, when we ask for their preferences, most want to stay where they are. But what we've been...have been doing in practice is primarily posting all classified positions when we're opening new schools. This is just an example to share with you. And allowing both internal and external applicants to apply for those classified support positions so that all are given an equal opportunity for the principal or the school administration to choose who they feel is the best, you know, candidate for the school. So in general, not just in opening new schools, but what we're consistently doing is posting on the website our open positions so that both internal and external candidates may apply and be considered for interviews instead of just, you know, transferring them. So the recommendations to, again, to GDJ were highlighted there for you to reflect, you know, that being the case. The rule, GDJR, what we've recommended is the elimination of the rule for classified staff as far as looking at a point system. I think the last time this may have been reviewed was in '98, so you can imagine how many schools we've opened since that time. So it looks like, you know, Marty said, you know, I think what may have happened with this policy, it looks like it was just copied and pasted, because this is indicative of what we do as far as working through the point system for our professional staff, but it's really not applicable to classified. it's really not applicable to classified staff. So again, with our recommendation to post all classified positions, we felt it would be a good idea to eliminate this policy.
So in the past, in essence, in the past, when there's a job opening for, in, in that position, in essence, we would offer it to in-house first, and should they transfer, then the open position would be offered to outside the district, right? So if I move from, let's say Springfield to the new school, then the Springfield position would be opened. So what you were doing was giving the, giving preference to the, to somebody who already worked for the district?
We have been doing that, but in, probably in the last year or so, what we were, what we've moved to, kind of based on the information we received from principals and just in our experiences, is we're posting all now. We're posting all. So it's not given first, you know, opportunity. It's allowing the principal, the higher, that, you know, where the vacancy exists, to consider who they want, you know, so they, they will interview both internal and external.
And the idea there is most of classified staff members typically want to stay with their school, they don't want to transfer anyway?
Usually if we're, if it's in the case of opening a new school, that's what we've seen, but we feel like it's really in the best interest of the school administration to be able to interview and select from all candidates.
Sure.
It also, one other, can I make one other point?
Sure.
We have now have so many schools of each grade band, you know, with 11 elementary schools, you're more likely to have multiple people that want to transfer maybe or not.
Okay.
And it also gives the principal the ability to post all instead of, I want this one, I don't want this one. And it just, it's been simpler just to say, let's just post them all, and then the principal will decide.
Okay.
It creates a less sticky situation from an HR standpoint.
Sure.
Because now you don't have Gray, when he was a principal, saying, "Oh, I really would like to have you," but then Michelle comes along and says, "Well, I really kind of want that job," and now Gray's in a situation where he's got to choose. It eliminates that because everybody's on the same process. Everybody applies if you're interested in the position.
Okay.
Next policy for review, GDKA, support staff hours of work. And the changes recommended there mirror the policy for instructional staff hours of work, which was formally approved last year. Of course, there have been modifications to these hours temporarily for this year, but we felt that it would, it would be most appropriate to go back and mirror the instructional hours of work in board policy in hopes that that will be the case.
Okay, that was going to be my question is, do these in fact line up with the intended school hours, which may or may not be what we're doing under, under COVID times?
Correct.
Okay.
That was my concern, because there's a 10, 10-minute differential in the middle school, and I just want to make sure I understood that that's why that was there.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And then GDQC, retirement of support staff. Again, similar to the policy we were discussing just a few moments ago, we've removed Terry, and we've added or highlighted just a couple of points regarding reference to the People website. And employees should notify their supervisor and HR of their intent to retire as soon as possible. Any questions about any of the 16 policies? I may answer for you.
So Liza, we've got the follow-up about the out-of-state leave.
Yes.
But just process-wise, when we come back together at our next meeting, we'll do a second reading, and that's when we'll be looking for a vote to affirm the, the changes. And you'll bring anything else, if anybody thinks of something later, you know, you'll bring any additional changes to us in, I guess in two weeks, whenever our next meeting is?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Our next topic is to talk about money. Ms. Lordo.
Good evening. Before we jump into the budget, I'd just like to take this opportunity to publicly say again, I know we sent out a press release, but congratulations and thank you to the Fort Mill community for continuing to support us through the impact fee process. And just to recap, last Wednesday, the U.S. Supreme Court issued an unpublished opinion in favor of the Fort Mill School District impact fee.
I wish it was the U.S. Supreme Court, it was the state Supreme Court.
It was the South Carolina Supreme Court. In summary, the opinion stated that the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act, the state law, was valid, it was constitutional, and that the York County Local Ordinance, which we operate under, substantially complies with the act. So that was fully supporting the process that has been enacted here in York County. Going forward, the home builder plaintiffs can file for rehearing. They have a 15-day period, which would expire March 25th. So we are waiting to see if they elect to file for a rehearing. Just to recap, we have collected to date 38.3 million in impact fees, which are in a separate account held by York County. We will now begin working with legal counsel and our bond financial advisors to determine the best course time period for using these funds for taxpayer savings. One key point is keeping in mind that we don't want to draw all the funds in one year because we would have a significant decrease in debt service tax mileage, but then the next year it would come back on. So we want a plan that makes the most sense to benefit our taxpayers over a couple-year period for their taxes. And we'll be working on looking at the best scenario with those options and bring that to you at a future meeting. As we get in, we have plenty of time to set the debt mileage for next year. We'll see how, continue to watch tax collections over the next couple of months, what the value of a mill is for setting debt mileage, looking at just the best plan for that. But we are obviously very happy about the outcome of this for this community. It's very historical, this process, and, and everyone has been tremendous in, in helping us through the process. So any board member comments?
Leanne, I just want to sort of add on or clarify something that you said.
Sure.
We, we fully intend to look at the best way to get taxpayer relief.
Absolutely.
I don't want anybody to think that that's not part of the plan. It's just, you don't want to necessarily just take it in one lump sum and then be back the next year without, without anything.
Correct.
So.
But it is absolutely, the taxpayers will see relief on the debt mileage side.
I just want to say congratulations, Dr. Raps, to your team, Ms. Lordo. Thank you for your efforts. I know a lot of people in the administration have put a lot of effort into it, a lot of colleagues on the board have put a ton of time into that effort, a lot of legislative effort as well. Michael Johnson, now Senator, was instrumental in making sure that that was passed at the York County level. Look forward to Councilman Audette with the renewing of it. So that's, it's a huge win, a, a, a big team effort. Congratulations and thank you.
Absolutely. And just for the community.
A tool in the toolbox for a place like, the challenges we're, we're faced with.
This began in November of 2017. So it has been a multi-year process for us.
Representative Felder as well.
Yes.
I don't want to miss anybody, but certainly instrumental.
Because the, the reality is, it required a majority of county council to support. So while there are locals, we've got a few that still have little touchies, so we need them too.
Definitely.
Leanne, isn't there a 15-day possibility of a hearing?
Correct, a rehearing, a rehearing which will expire the end of next week.
So we've got to keep fingers and toes crossed?
Yes.
Until then.
Yep.
And I know several other districts in the state, locally, close by, but also elsewhere in the state, have been watching very closely to make sure that we had a positive outcome because it is a tool, in the toolbox, that other districts in similar scenarios would, would like the opportunity to explore as well.
Yes, several districts that I'm aware of have completed their comprehensive impact fee studies and are in the process of now working with their county councils, and a lot of them were waiting. So we will, I think we will begin to see more impact fees passed throughout the state going forward. Okay?
Very exciting.
Very exciting. So let's jump into the budget discussion. I'll, I'll start by saying that this is only March 16th, very, very early in the process. As you're aware, House Ways and Means has passed their version. We have not seen that in detail as far as specific allocations for us. This week, it is being printed. So I expect by the end of this week, I will receive the allocations, but I checked this afternoon, hopeful something was out there and it's not posted yet. So the House, full House, will begin debating the budget next Monday, March 22nd, if I have that date correct, next Monday. So we will, we will see more of that discussion next week. The budget analysis that I gave you, these numbers will change. These are, these are only for discussion purposes, but want to give you an idea, let's see if I can work this.
Mine has to work as magic.
Oh wait, it's not turned on.
Turn it on.
Push the any key.
Always turn it on.
Off on.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. As far as what I have looked at so far in beginning to develop the budget for next year on the revenue side, we have completed our meetings with the school principals and department heads on the expenditure side. Later on, I will send you the complete list of requests, but I'll share with you that it is over $20 million.
Only 20 million?
Only 20 million.
Only 20 million?
Pretty consistent with, with prior years.
Has her wand with her.
Once again, they're, they're all things that we would love to put into place, new positions, new programs, new initiatives, but it, it's over $20 million. So starting with the revenue, just a couple of key points that I want to point out. As far as property taxes, the way that I project property taxes is I look at actual collections through January 31st was when I began compiling these numbers. And then I'll look at collections February through June of last year, same period last year. In looking at those numbers, I think that we're going to be potentially very close to the budget this year. You can see that I'm showing right now a potential overage of 1.7 million. That's primarily in the fee and lieu category, and that can go up and down. I've been working actually with the York County Auditor over the past week, had a lot of discussions with him. There are several companies that in their fee agreement, they pay the full amount upfront, and then they get a partial refund. I cannot explain the logistics of that, but way back when, when the, the fee agreement was developed, that's how it was set. So I'm not going to lock in on that overage yet. We will see what happens over the next couple of months with fee and lieu, but that's where the increase is primarily in fee and lieu. The regular tax collections are very close to what the approved budget amount was. And in the budget amount, as you recall, we used a 3% growth rate. So it appears that we were on target with that, and I have used a 3% growth rate for 2021, '22 to develop the 89,009,106. That does equate to a 310,000 value per mill for operations versus 275,000 this year. I have also included in this projection, an increase in millage of 10 mills. I don't know what your allowable Act 38 formula millage will be yet. I do know that the CPI component or the Consumer Price Index is 1.23%. So if you multiply that by our current millage, that does equal 2.5 mills. So at this point, I know we have available 2.5 mills. I think we'll have available 7.5 mills from growth, but I don't have that number. But I have used 10 mills, which is pretty consistent with what we've done the last couple of years early on, we use 10 mills as a projection. I did look at the RFA website today, and they did post that they probably won't have the district populations until May 4th. I remember last year, we got those in April, so I'm hopeful we might get that a few weeks earlier. But it's based on when the U.S. Census Bureau posed their information on population growth. As far as the, so any other questions? I mean, that's the key pieces of where I think we may be with property taxes right now. But it could, vehicle tax collections are very consistent every month. So I expect we will be very close to the, the budgeted property tax number.
Leanne, the only question I had is, you've got base student costs at 2,525. I thought I read 2,500.
I have, and, and I was going to, as we get into the next slide on the state, I have heard that it was anywhere from 2,500 to 2,525. So my, the first number I heard was 2,525, and I ran the numbers on that. I have heard and seen printed since possibly 2,500.
Unfortunately, that's all I saw. Very disappointing, but.
Right.
11 dollars.
So we're not sure exactly what that's going to be yet, and once again, it could change with the Senate, once it gets to the Senate Finance and then the full Senate. But as far as EFA, the budgeted number, and this is a challenge not only for our district, but all of the districts that are somewhat fast-growing districts, but even median-sized districts across the state. The budgeted EFA number, you can see that we're under right now for 2020, 2021, is 44.2 million. Based on our current enrollment, and this is at the 45-day average daily membership, because that's how we're funded, average daily membership, it looks like we may only collect 43,260,812. That's because of the students that are currently not enrolled because they elected homeschool, private school, or charter due to COVID. That's about 600 students for us right now. And it's very difficult and a challenge to predict how many of those students are going to immediately return in the fall, or is it going to be a two-year phase-in? We, we feel confident they'll come back at some point, or the majority, it's just how many are going to be here in August. And so every district across the state, there's numerous emails among my colleagues going around, and everyone is saying, "I'm, I'm low on EFA." You know, "My EFA revenue is under where I normally am." So we are under, if this holds true, we'll be under about 957,000. So in projecting for next year, my 45,543,000 number includes 800 new students for growth, and it includes fully catching up, which I'm not sure we will, the 600 students. So that is our real challenge, is what should we use and be comfortable with for student enrollment? And we'll continue to update you. I'm curious to see what is our 135-day enrollment look like, our ADM, average daily membership? And what is our virtual academy registration look like when it closes next week? Because we think that may be another key indicator of enrollment for next year with virtual academy. So does that sort of help you or make sense of kind of where our challenge is? Normally, the EFA projection is, is pretty simple. It's, it's pretty simple.
Right. But.
Right.
It's the 600 students that.
Correct.
You know, I mean, I still drive around and see the houses being constructed, right? And so the, the actual growth of net new is not, is, is not unusual and typical year, and we can project all that, but the, but the return of those who've chosen a different avenue for schooling this year remains to be seen, what happens next year.
We've received.
We've received information, as a parent of children in the district, I've received information about enrolling in the Fort Mill Virtual Academy for next year. Have we also reached out to those 600 families and said, you know, what's your thinking for next year? Or we?
I believe we have. Yes, yes.
Yeah, it was about 600.
650 or something like that.
It was, it was about 350. I don't remember, 350 and 250. I don't remember which way it went, but one was homeschooled and one was charter slash private. And I don't remember which one was which, but there were two categories of people that.
For virtual.
Oh.
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke. So I was asking the 600 that are not in our virtual academy, who went to other schools of the district.
Communication, correct? Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
About enrolling in virtual. I think, but I think Celia is also saying, can we, for those students in particular, I know we're not, I don't know when we do the actual enrollment for next year for existing students.
May, yes.
But can we, is, is there an opportunity to do something with these 600 students, maybe even earlier, about their, their thoughts for next year in general?
Are you coming?
A better idea.
Are you still considering? Are you, yeah.
If, if Chris is leaning on that side, great, just let us know.
Right.
If you're not sure, that's okay, just let us know which way you're leaning.
So we can discuss that. We haven't already done that.
Reality is, May 1st is not that far away.
Right.
I'm not a bidding person, but I got a quarter I'd like to discuss with anybody about how that number comes out to be.
And those students, they, they would not be eligible at this moment to register for the virtual academy because that's just Fort Mill School District students re-enrolling. And they, but, so when would those students be able to enroll? Would it be after May when the current students enroll?
They have the opportunity of a Google form that was sent out, so it wasn't tied to re-registration.
No, I'm talking about the 600 who used to be in our district.
Right, they can register for virtual during this open virtual period.
During the virtual registration?
Yes.
And if they choose to, that say, do face-to-face, then would they register in May with our current students?
Yes.
Okay, so they can register when our current students can register? Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
So worst case, we have a much better idea by early May?
Correct.
On existing students, as well as the return of those?
Correct.
And then we still have to project the growth that comes in over the summer?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So it's a, it's a little more difficult to come up with that number right now than it has been in prior years from a, a budget standpoint. The, the one line item, well, let me mention two things. One, you saw where the Senate passed and the House have now passed the teacher salary step funding amendment. I do not know our allocation yet, but we were successful as a group of districts in having the wording clarified to allocate funds based on actual salary step numbers versus an average. The first wording was a, like a three-year average, which didn't make a lot of sense to the finance group. We were like, that'll never equal what it really cost us. The second piece was that it's now permanent, meaning the state will now plan their budget based on that salary step going forward. So that will be an additional amount for us to put in. The line item that says new state aid teacher salary was the 4% cost of living from the prior year, if you remember that. They funded it separately and we were originally allocated 3,468,000. Our actual for this year is 3,679,000. So I've used the higher number in planning with our growth in teachers. We should be at least at that level for the 4% cost of living. That is what that line item is. Once again, with fringe benefits, we've seen a little bit of an increase in allocation than they originally gave us. They always go in in October and review that. And so we picked up 757,000 that will carry into next year as well. But the big pieces that we're missing, a lot of additional revenue where previously we've had overages that then we could carry and commit the next year, is in those property taxes, because we're going to be so close to budget and in the CFA number. Because we don't have the growth, because of the decrease in students right now, we don't have the growth to then count towards next year, if that makes sense. So that's our two big pieces that we're still looking at very closely as we go forward.
Ms. Lourdes, would you clarify on the step? They did not fund the step this year. Our district did, correct?
Correct. Our district, you as a school board, made the decision early on to go ahead and guarantee our teachers that they would receive their step, which we classified as their service credit. So we have been paying our teachers since their new contract started.
So the budget they're proposing is just that one catch-up step? Or the catch-up plus what they would normally get this year, coming year?
It is just the catch-up, but it should be then in the state budget plan for '21, '22 to continue it because it is permanent. Correct, correct.
For our teachers, they would not see the immediate, the catch-up. They would see the future, you know, for next year.
For next year, absolutely, yes.
That's an important point.
Yes.
Because they're, they're advertising that they're going to pay it out before the end of the year. And our teachers have already received.
Our teachers have been receiving it and you guaranteed it to them this year. And so we began paying our teachers in August.
Has the language been clarified about the lump sum? Because.
I think they're debating on how to do it.
Well, many districts.
Already have, to your point.
Yes, many districts requested, it was very unclear, you know, if you're a district who had not been paying it, do you go in now and pay it March through June, July? Do you have to do a lump sum? There's tax implications for that if you do a lump sum payment. So we think the final wording gave districts more flexibility, as long as they did pay their teachers by the end of their contract this year.
So we think we're okay with the fact that we've been paying it all along?
Correct.
Without having to do something weird at the end of the year?
Correct, because we have paid our teachers and we have met the requirements for that. And we may have been the only district, or maybe just a handful who did that.
And basically what it means is that what we've been paying out in that step that we elected to continue, we're going to see a replenishment basis of our funds.
Correct, which will help our budget situation tremendously.
And other deficiency.
Yes.
Is there, considering the, the news about that, right? Is there, do you believe it'd be necessary to reaffirm to our teachers that you have been getting that?
Yes.
So that there's not a?
Yeah.
People don't listen. That's why I looked at Wayne and said, you know, made the statement I made.
And we, we can certainly do that and send a note to remind them.
Our teachers have already received it.
Yes.
And I think most of, everybody I know I've talked to, especially early on, was very appreciative, that was a good thing, but having a reminder is probably not a bad thing.
Yes, excellent point.
Five months later, they've forgotten that that's not going to take away. It's been a.
You're getting used to it.
Yeah, I mean, right, that's reasonable to not necessarily remember. It's been a long COVID year.
It's been a long year. We'll be glad to do that and that was excellent point. So looking at our, our grand total, you can see, once again, I have balanced this with the same transfer and I've got another slide, we'll talk about the contingency fund and the status, but we would need to pull in the 5,250,000. I was hoping that we could lower that to just equal the cost of opening Forest Creek Middle, but that's about 1.5 million difference.
That's about three schools difference, so.
So I think what we're, we're really seeing the impact now of opening three schools so quickly. It is a very large operational impact to staff those schools and just the overhead cost of three schools that quickly. And we just don't have the capacity to increase revenue enough in one year to offset that. So it's just going to take us a little while to shift off that dependency of the contingency money with new revenue and not need to pull this in. But in counting that 5.2 million, we could potentially have projected revenue next year of 173,892,000. So that's an increase of 9,493,000. The student ADM number that we are working with, based on Dr. Holden's projections, are As I stated, I plugged in 10 mils in operating millage. Countywide would remain the same and we have not considered debt millage at this point.
So that 85 that's on there is just right now?
Will change.
And we hadn't even looked at it?
Correct. We have not even considered where we may be with debt millage. And some of that may depend on, we're getting ready, hopefully, if you approve it, to do two spring bond issues. And depending on the market and what the final pricing on this bond payments could also affect it to the good. So we're very early in, before we need to set debt millage. I could have just left that off, but.
Well, and we traditionally set that in like August.
August, yes.
And again, for those watching, that's the number that has the greatest potential for adjustment due to the impact fee.
Correct, correct.
Good news.
Excellent news. The next page is just, as we usually do, I just want to give you kind of an idea of what is in our category one priority or most likely will be. These are many items that you see every year, such as the salary step increase, the South Carolina retirement employer contribution will increase 1%. And then overall fringe benefits for health insurance, workers' comp. As we have discussed with you and you approved previously, we've been working with new classroom teachers, count of 40 teachers. And those have been allocated with, Miss, again, working with the schools and the projections by grade level in best how to allocate those 40 classroom teachers. The opening of Forest Creek Middle, you've seen the detail on that, 3.4 million. It's very difficult in a year, back-to-back opening schools. Then the, as I mentioned, I'm counting 800 new students for the $100 per student for the school budgets. And then the next couple items are based on current contractual obligations that are based on student counts, teacher counts, inflationary increases. When you get into our instructional technology, network engineering, licensing, utilities, cleaning, insurance, maintenance, repair supplies, contracted services that run through maintenance, school security contracts, which is a combination of our school resource officers and our defender officers at all of our schools. And then we have a couple of items related to safety and security. One is our district-wide radio program that we have been working on. These are the annual recurring cost. We fund the equipment out of capital, but we have to pick up the annual recurring cost. The bus GPS system, this is our portion for district-owned buses. The state has put in this new system on the state-owned buses. They have paid for all the equipment. We are covering the equipment. It's on our capital project list, but this is the annual cost for that GPS system that, that we're hopeful, it, it has an amazing list of features. And we are, we think our parents will be extremely pleased with the, the features that are on that system.
So this is how they can track where the bus is, if it's running late, et cetera?
Yes.
That's good stuff.
Yes.
Yes.
We're very excited about that.
Something parents are very interested in being able to keep tabs on.
What, you never know if the bus is running late or if you're early or, you know, there's a.
Rear traffic.
Well, or just a, a substitute bus driver, you know, that might have the route a little bit different, so.
So I was just flipping to, Mr. Buckley provided me some of the features, because I thought you may be interested in that. The, it'll compare, is the equipment, the location, the planned route, the stops to actual, the alert notifications. The, it'll provide the parents just with more transparency about their child's bus. And then the parents can access the bus stop locations, the route, the pickup time on a mobile app. And also like rapid acceleration might be interesting.
Like my i360 that he uses?
So we're, we're very excited to be able to add this safety and, and security feature to our buses and piggyback on what the state's already going to be doing with the state buses.
And hopefully it may cut down on some calls to the Transportation Department by people being able to be self-service, so that's good.
Yes.
Will you be able to, will these also be on, not your daily route buses, but your buses that are taking like the Athletics? The activity buses?
Yes, we have, we have set it up so that they would be on the buses as well.
Oh, good. We did it midnight sometimes for those kids to come home and it's like 12:15, 12:30, I'm wondering where they are.
And then the last item on this list is, as you recall, when we began our impact fee pursuit and discussion with York County and the intergovernmental agreement that we signed, we agreed to pay the county annually $50,000 for support of the impact fee, the staffing that they needed to add and what was required with that. And so we need to now build in that $50,000 annual fee because we cannot pay it out of the impact fee proceeds.
So point of question on that, however, now that Clover is retaining and so on and so forth, I would expect our piece of that pie to decrease because others.
We inquired.
That expense as well.
We inquired.
I take that as a positive response to that inquiry. Okay, then.
Hopefully we'll have continued discussions going forward about that. Yep, might need your help.
Got it.
Okay, got it?
Councilman, I'll deck.
Yes.
He's going to get seven text messages.
Yes.
You'll let us know.
I'll let you know. So the total of these priority one items, this is kind of what I call the cash out the door, things that we know we need to do, is 10.6 million. Flipping back, my new revenue projection at 10 mils is only 9.4 million, but I'm not worried about the 1.1 million at this point because I don't have that teacher salary step increase in here yet. I really don't know what my final EFA projections are and we're still looking at what are we going to use for that growth number. But this is just kind of where I am. These, these are my working documents of where I am in the process.
And in summary, what it says is the money out the door in and of itself would require 10 mils.
Yes.
With the numbers as it stands right now. So we don't know if we have 10 mils.
Right.
But, but I heard you say there's a list of $20 million for other things, but I mean, we, we don't have the luxury of.
Well, and now is the time that I make this statement every year. This is why we come to this point every year of uncertainty and we, we wonder, maybe new board members wonder why we don't have elementary foreign language, why we don't, we come to these decisions and we may end up on the positive side and be able to afford some things, but that's, that's our dilemma. That's our dilemma.
The challenge as it stands right now, yep.
The other piece I'll just kind of share with you, we are, so you may say, okay, where are we going to go for anything else on that $20 million list? Now, the 20 million does include these items, so it's not.
Half of it.
It's not quite that bad. But we are starting to discuss, just to recap, federal COVID coronavirus money. We received the, the initial allocation was the 633,000 under CARES Act or SRA1. We then received 1.2 million, which was under state coronavirus relief funds. Both of those two pots were. Both of those two pots were, I've used the word primarily, used for PPE across all the schools, some technology. And we set up our COVID testing site. It's funded from the state coronavirus relief funds. We are now looking at our SRO II, is what they're calling it. These funds are allocated on Title I. So we are not a district that received millions and millions of dollars, like many districts across the state, who have put out all of the wonderful things that they're doing for their district. Our allocation is 2.2 million in SRO II, and I'm rounding the numbers for you. We are now starting, as administration, to discuss SRO II. The deadline for expenditure is September of 2023. So we could fund some positions for two budget years, but knowing that we would then have to pick them up the next year. So we're starting to discuss what is on the budget request list and what would be appropriate to fund under SRO II. And then you probably saw now where we're hearing SRO III is coming. We have no idea what our allocation is, but we're hearing it could be more than SRO II. So we will begin now discussing those funds and how best to use those, and we will certainly come back to you and, and make those recommendations on the best use of those. So we're hopeful we can pick up some things under those funds that couldn't, if this would stay true, and all we could fund is category one, that we could pick up some other things under those funding sources. So it's not all doom and gloom.
How much guidance been given on the COVID number?
Give me a little more.
Meaning, meaning I know that we got X amount of dollars in the COVID monies, but is there a general guidance that the schools have been given on how to use?
Well, we have, as a district administration, we have used those funds, like if we buy PPE.
Yep.
We purchase it and distribute it out to the schools.
But the 600,000 from this, from CARES and the 1.2 million from the state, there were categories.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And that's what...
There were specific, there are 12 funding categories.
Okay.
For those two that cover pretty much what your needs are, such as technology, special services, remediation, hotspots. Now, in the SRO II and SRO III, there are a couple additional categories. Some of the things off the top of my head, they're facility-related. If you need to do facility improvements to reduce your risk, they have added a few more categories.
Like air quality, I know it was...
Correct, indoor air quality.
Got it.
So they are, they are giving us a wide array of uses of those funds.
Got it.
And we're thinking, you were gonna make a comment going forward, I think, particularly on SRO III, we'll probably be bringing your recommendation in regards to air quality.
Yes. So we're, we're at this point considering using the majority of SRO II for some needed positions in these different areas, and then using SRO III in our facilities.
But if we use it for positions and personnel, we know that that has an end date.
It does have an end date, but at least we have two years.
Right.
At least we have two years to build it in.
As to other categories and options, bus radio systems and things of that nature.
Right. So it's a balancing of which pot does it fit best?
Right.
And that's what we're doing now, is our next step after kind of looking at these numbers.
And in the, in the budget, I don't know if it stayed or not, but there was, there was discussion about like school nurses. So we already have a school nurse. I didn't know how it was written. You know, we have a nurse in every school. And I said, I don't know how it was written, where, would there be funding for school nurses, or was it only going to be given to those districts to fill a gap where they didn't have a school nurse in every school?
I do not know, I do not know how it's written either. But many times, hopefully this won't be the case, but many times it is, I know this happened with SROs.
That's, yeah.
It only applied if you did not currently have one.
To fill your gap.
Correct.
So we could use that for Forest Creek's nurse, but we would not be able to use it for anybody else.
Correct. So we will see what happens as the process continues in Columbia.
Ms. Lorna?
Yes.
Going back just a little bit, the budget you've built is on 800 new students?
Yes.
And is that growth students, or is, we just had a conversation about...
That's growth students. That does not count the 600 difference.
And you've built this budget with 800 plus 600?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And that's something you're gonna continue to look at?
Correct, yes.
The 800 is based on Dr. Holden's number?
Correct.
Okay.
It's based on the 18,000, yeah, whatever that...
The 18, you said it earlier, 18,366.
Correct.
And so that would be, but that would be inclusive of the 800 plus the 600?
Right.
It was created, if you think about that line on all those charts that we see, the growth line, as though COVID never happened, right? We were here this year, here the year before, the year before, the year before, the year before, and it's, it's what was projected to happen next. It didn't, it was not affected really in his projections at all by COVID. We happen to know that the number this year is down...
600.
By 600 who withdrew, but it, that's not in, in the analysis. The analysis was strictly on households and, you know, 2.2 kids per household or whatever the number is.
So it hasn't compromised integrity of that, that, that plan?
Yeah, and I think the reason for that is, you have to assume most of them are coming by in your planning. And if you, if they don't, then we adjust the next year. I mean, I, I, I think we'd be penny pound dollar short if we took a risk and didn't, didn't project what we thought, what could possibly happen.
I think you're right. I don't know that it, my gut says it's not 100%.
Yeah, me too.
My gut says it's not 100% next year.
Me too.
You know, it's probably never 100%, but it's, it's some fraction next year, another fraction the following year.
Well, what it would allow us to do, let's say we come in way short than we think, we'd have real favorable teacher pupil ratios next year, then we wouldn't have to hire as many going into year three in concept, you know?
It'd just be a budget, I guess, you know, you gotta have a understanding.
I'd rather have them here than...
And that leads me to the next one, the 40 teachers. These are new hires, these are above and beyond what we need at Forest Creek.
Correct.
So how are we feeling? Do you have any update on how we're feeling comfort-wise with that's the number, or that it's a larger number? What's the comfort level there?
I, I would say the number could always be larger if this group, you know, because one area that we're, we're continuing to look at with that number is special ed. So we're, we're looking at that with SRO II also, but it's, it's a toss-up when you look at, okay, where are we comfortable projecting enrollment, where are we comfortable with new teachers? We don't want to put ourselves in a situation in June where we are too low on that new teacher number, and we're struggling to find the best teachers. You know, if you go back to why we asked you to go and approve those early on, is we wanted to get ahead, and we wanted to be able to recruit and attract the best teachers. And we just don't want to put ourselves in that position in the spring, late spring, early summer. So it's a very, that is a very difficult number this year because of all the reasons we've talked about tonight from prior years for us. Because normally, we're in a situation where we know that number's low, and we're going to be looking at the bubbles, and we're just not sure, we're just not sure that's gonna happen.
You don't know, you're a little more uncertain this year that the 40 is the right number.
Correct.
I mean, if you take 800 kids.
Correct.
Right, that's, that's one, one teacher for every 20 kids, right? Roughly.
And that doesn't count the other 600.
If they come back.
Well, it assumes, yeah, I mean, it assumes that they're already here, really.
Right, right, exactly.
And we have the piece of virtual, the virtual program now that is coming into play with this, and the teachers that will be pulled out and committed to Virtual Academy next year. And that, that's a new piece for us in planning.
But it doesn't sound like you're saying, hey, board, we really need another N number of teachers.
No, I'm not saying that.
The budget's not saying that, but...
Not yet.
So...
Give us four more weeks, and it could be, oh my gosh, we missed it by 15, and we need 15 more.
Right.
Or it could be, oh, we're so close, but we do need five more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're close. I'm not saying that we won't come back and, and we do probably need to adjust with special ed positions as we move forward.
And we may look at, you know, the next couple of months, we may look at any openings that we have. As Ms. McGarrettie mentioned, we always have those last-minute things. We may look at any possible openings, and how do we shift that around, and...
The funding formula could...
The funding formula, there's so many things, so many of these numbers up in the air, yes.
Do you know, am I, am I asking unfair question? We'll see if you have an answer.
Okay.
You know how much the step increase as a, as a district, what is our number for the step increase for this year?
I don't know exactly this year. I used last year, which was 1.4 million.
We're thinking around that same number?
We're thinking around that same number. We're actually going through our position control budget in detail right now. The finance department, we know we're looking at all the vacancies. We're kind of going in a lot of detail with it right now.
I'm going on that number.
Okay, 1.4 million.
I was just wondering, what's kind of the range?
Yeah. So I'm hoping my state number will, it won't be that, because they don't fund, you know, they're only going to fund teachers. They're not going to fund all the other staff that we have in the district that we funded the step.
Right.
But I'm hoping it's a good, solid number to offset some of that.
But to that point, we as a board, we as a district, do fund that everybody else.
Correct, correct, yes.
Out of our own, right.
Out of our own local money.
The PPE you mentioned is, we spent, I think, roughly 2 million so far. I don't know how much of that is stuff that we can reuse next year, how much of that is gloves, masks, things that are really not reusable, cleaning supplies. Have you accounted for that in this budget as far as, well, moving forward, we have these additional things that are needed to operate the schools?
We have, I have not accounted for purchasing PPE out of the general fund next year. If we had that need at a high level that we couldn't handle out of maintenance, I would probably go to some small capital funds, potential interest earnings, things like that, that we would have.
I think it's gonna be interesting to see the next guidelines. I think they're reconsidering them now, the CDC considering children, most likely, I know there's studies going on, but I think those terminate earlier, I don't think they're quick study with the vaccine. I think they just started those. What is next year going to look like, especially for our students, especially under 16 years of age?
Yes.
And what kind of PPE are we going to need, especially for students?
And we could potentially set aside part, if we get this higher amount on SRO III, we could potentially set aside a small piece of SRO III for that as well.
But, but as an example, we bought the, I'm gonna call them Foggers, that's not the right term.
Yes.
For, for each school.
Correct.
I have to believe we're gonna still want to buy the, the juice for them at least for another year, if not in perpetuity, right?
Right, it might help with the flu and all kinds of other stuff that we haven't had going on. You're right.
So those kind of things, I'm sure are...
Those are great points, and we'll, we'll have some discussion about that. We're trying hard to get past COVID, but I know that's probably a reality out there.
The last one, how's the testing site being utilized? I know we've heard it's up and running, it's working well, how's it being, I mean, is it, how's it being utilized?
It's my help.
It's still being utilized. We're down, the numbers are down as far as testing goes, still a good bet on Monday and Tuesdays, and then it just kind of tapers off part of the week, but it's still being utilized, our staff and our students.
And I don't know, for those listening, if, if you picked up what, what Tamara said, but definitely still being used. I also think, if I recall, we went up in terms of the capacity to where they were doing an appointment every, two appointments every 10 minutes or something like that. So they increased the ability to do more to meet the demand. Doesn't sound like, it sounds like that's starting to, to whittle down, but still doing a fair number of tests every day, from what I understand.
It is, but then, I mean, we also have the two testing sites nearby as well, so our parents have plenty of options.
Is it something that we're seeing tapering off enough, and this is probably very loaded, so it doesn't have to go there. Is it something that we're seeing taper off enough that we need to start pulling back our number of days, our hours, or anything of that nature? Or is it still enough so that we need to just continue as is?
I would not recommend that. It would be a test.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, not yet. Brian, I want to circle back to one more thing, talking about the overall projected enrollment. You know, that there's, there's two different methodologies. One basis is based on live births, one is based on households and kids per household. I, I think, and that's why I was saying, it's, it's, it's death in those projections to COVID, because it's all about whatever our historical projections of our community has X number of homes or whatever. And I, I think, I think the thing that's got to happen is to see, does over the long haul, COVID change anything in those assumptions, right? Because if anything, I think what we've learned through the impact fee study is, when we did the analysis, it was, I don't remember, it was a half a kid per town home and...
0.6.
And 1.8 per, per home or something like that. And we found that, that that seemed to be low, because our townhomes aren't necessarily only a half a kid per, right? And so, so I think that's the other thing, that about the same time with, with Dale and Cog and everybody doing their projections, we're gonna redo a study in another year or so, in, in terms of our community, to see what the impact is. And, and that's all based on kids per household in this community. And so that, that's the thing, you know, is COVID gonna make a material difference in the percentage of those kids that attend public school?
I can't, I can't imagine, my gut, that it goes down. I can only imagine that it goes up, because now, let's say, you're in a surrounding district that hasn't been meeting in person for the last year, whereas this district has offered its students many more opportunities to be in person, and now we're five days a week and other districts are not, that you're not considering getting out of that scenario. And would you then, because if you were, it's like, no, I'll only buy a house, would you consider now a townhome because they're available, or apartment because they're available? I, I would have to imagine, as a parent, I would probably make that decision. That's my gut, is that that will increase. I think the interesting thing for next year is the level of uncertainty. How many of these 600 will come back? You know, will we get to 800? I, I don't think, I think there's gonna be similar amount of growth, because you see the houses.
And the timing, right?
Right.
Because, because the reality is, we do have to make some decisions pretty early. And I know we've already seen some concerns about a virtual decision right now, because, because we don't know what things are gonna look like in August. And, and so I, you know, some that have chosen to go to a homeschool environment may want to ride it out for another year, whether it's, you know, a, a virtual, a homeschool or whatever, you know, not ours, but some other, they may want to ride it out for another year until it's really behind us.
Or you can get children vaccinated. You know, that, that's a reasonable decision, I think, for some of those folks. It's in, I think it's a very, because when we set the budget last year, COVID had just hit, and it was, well, you know, who knows? You really, that was, you really couldn't even make an educated guess. Here you've got at least some parameters, and it's within this, you know, range of, eh, somewhere in here. And, and that's the, I guess that's probably literally a million-dollar question, right?
And people are still bringing kids here. And people that are moving out or downsizing or otherwise, their kids have already graduated our system, so we're on round two. I think about just, you know, some that I've been involved with, we're on round two of kids coming in, because we haven't had kids for a few years in that particular house, and now there's one, two, four, whatever. So people are still moving here and bringing their families. They're not, we're not hurting for kids and people.
See, I think if we don't, if we're not considering, just for a minute, not considering the 600 that left.
Right.
I think we've, those growth projections for this school year has been pretty close to accurate.
We've exceeded our growth projections.
It's almost even under, which we always do.
Yes, yes.
So we're still growing.
Correct.
So I would expect, next year, we're gonna grow at that 800 like you suggested, like was projected. It's just that... It's just that 600 that we didn't anticipate leaving, but.
What percentage this year versus the following year?
Right, right.
Really a good trade off question. What is the, what is the risk of undershooting versus the risk of overshooting? And which, which risk do you want to take?
So we just wanted you to kind of know this is a topic we're discussing a lot. And as you can see among your discussions, it's a very difficult target right now. And wrapping up the discussion tonight on the budget, just wanted to give you a quick recap where we are on that contingency reserve fund. We are currently, or at the beginning of this fiscal year, our balance was 15,683,000. We have some litigation legal fees that we paid out this year related to completing that process. And then the impact fee agreement, the county did bill us for three years. So I paid the 150,000 since we did not have a budget in the general fund out of this. And then, as you recall, we are transferring 5.2 million, 5,250,000 for the opening of Kingstown and River Trail Elementary Schools. That would leave us a balance at June of 10.2 million. And then if we plan on, if we do need in the end to pull an additional 5.2 million for next year's budget, we would still have right at 5 million. Possibly we could add a little bit to that at June, depending on how these final revenue numbers come in like we usually look at in May and June.
Because we added a couple million.
We've added a couple million, 2 million.
Last couple of Junes.
Correct.
Seems like we've had a little bit left.
Correct. So I just wanted to show you this, just to, if we do need to pull that full 5,250,000 again next year, we have the funds to draw down. And honestly, the auditors like to see us pulling that down and not leaving this sitting out here too long when we're opening these schools. And that's our, our intention of open, using it to open these schools.
And is that in line with, I know usually it's a couple of years of support from the contingency for new schools. So leaving five, roughly five in there, does that allow for that process to complete?
I would say we probably don't want more than that in there because the auditors do question that.
You're comfortable that it's not?
I think we would be okay. I think we would be okay with that.
You're comfortable the number's not more? You don't need more than the five?
I don't think we need more. At this point, we've had that running balance and we have the plan for these new schools coming on that were in the referendum documented. And I think we're adhering to the plan.
I would, I would venture a guess, we might need the following year, a little bit of carryover from the Forest Creek, the second year of Forest Creek, right? So I don't think it would be zero.
Well, and honestly.
It takes a couple of years to wean off.
Yes.
So.
We've got the second year of Forest Creek. We've got what would be.
The S or two.
We've got the second year of Kingstown and River Trail. But we're also just in the second year of Catawba Ridge. So we're still kind of weaning off of all of those others, so.
Right, we're making headway, that's a great point. We're making headway. I mean, Catawba Ridge High School came on and then two elementaries and now a middle. So any other, on March 16th, any other budget questions? It will probably change tomorrow. I hope it changes by the end of the week. I hope I get the House Ways and Means version of the budget for us.
Hope it changes to a good.
Yeah, I hope so, yes.
All right, well, you are still up.
Okay.
Because we do have a couple of action items related to some, some money.
The first action item is the approval of our, I call it our annual 8% bond issue. This year, we are requesting 5,250,000. 5 million of that is for school facility projects and improvements. And we provided you a detailed list. 250,000, we allocate for bond issuance, closing costs, attorney fees, financial advisors, rating agencies. There's a whole list of things we have to pay. And just to recap, you have authority to issue debt up to 8% of the assessed value without referendum. I brought the numbers because you usually ask me, what is our capacity right now? So right now at June 30th, our legal, they call it our legal debt margin capacity is 24,966,000. So this would be 500, 5,250,000 of the 24.9 million capacity. So we, we don't have capacity to build a school. We have to do that through referendum, but we do, we are fine to have capacity for this option. I provided you a list of the projects that were developed and prioritized. Joe Romanek worked very closely with all of the school administrations and with maintenance in reviewing this project. As always, the list is greater than $5 million. And I said, we have to keep getting it lower, lower to $5 million. So we have worked through that to bring you the list. It is not intended to be an allocation per school. It is largely dependent on the age of the facilities and what the priority needs are in that year. So I just didn't want you to look at it and feel like, well, are all the high schools equal? Are all the middle schools, are all the elementary? That is not the process that we go through. We just look at what are the greatest needs in that next year by school. And then several of you requested clarification on some items and we responded. I won't go through every line item, but I'm certainly here, and Mr. Romanek's here, will answer any questions that you may have, any follow up questions, or if you didn't send us questions, any questions that you may have on the list. And before we get to your questions, let me just make sure that I say that this bond issue would be no increase in taxes on debt service. This is a level neutral tax impact because we would have a previous bond being paid off and that this would go in on its place. And so this would not affect the tax mileage. Questions? So you are, you are approving the issuance of the debt. You are not necessarily approving the list of projects, but we always like to provide them to you to make sure you don't have any concerns with those and that you're aware of what we would be doing with the funds in the schools.
Yes, so technically we're going to get a motion here in a minute for the amount.
Correct.
What we've got in front of us is today's thinking on what the amount would go towards based on priorities.
Correct.
The numbers will move around, individual projects will move around. You'll get into something and find out that it's not needed or more is needed. And, and you guys maximize the dollars every year.
Correct.
With these being the general goals of what you're going to do with it.
Well, and you answered all of my questions that I sent earlier, so.
Okay.
I'm solid.
Any other questions?
Looking through to see if I have anything else.
What, what's the expanded large executive board room at the district office? What's that project?
Over here.
The executive board.
Right here.
Remove the wall, we would remove the wall on this side?
Doorway closing.
Has got exceptionally tight in there, during.
Yes.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $5,250,000 general obligation bonds of Fort Mill School District, number four of York County, South Carolina, in one or more series to provide for the issuance of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds provided hereby to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of such, Theo really needs to stop. Obligations shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
We have a motion, a second, to provide the issuance and sale of not to exceed $5,250,000 bonds, general obligation bonds. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And then the next resolution is requesting approval of a general obligation bond for $6,500,000. This is for our annual calendar year principal and interest payments under the installment purchase plan. Just to recap, for the board, this was a mechanism that was allowed in the state to basically issue debt for school construction. It expired in 2006, but Fort Mill School District took advantage of that. And we used this funding to build Sugar Creek Elementary, Pleasantville Elementary, and we added a wing of classrooms to Nation Ford. These bonds, because of the nature of the installment purchase plan, you have to approve the principal and interest payments annually. It was issued under the Fort Mill School Facilities Corporation in 2006. We did refund this debt in 2015 and had some significant interest savings on those bonds. But we will, we will have this paid in full in 2031. So we're about 10 years into this and we'll keep doing this for 10 years annually. The second piece of this issue will be for the equipment acquisition plan. This was issued in 2017 for HVAC projects at three schools. And then we added part of a fourth school. And this debt will be paid in full in 2027. But this requires your annual approval to make the interest, interest, principal and interest payments on the equipment acquisition debt. So the combination of the installment purchase plan and the equipment acquisition payment is the 6,500,000, no other use of that bond issue.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $6,500,000 general obligation bonds of Fort Mill School District, number four of York County, South Carolina, in one or more series to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of such obligations shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Second. We have a motion and a second to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $6,500,000 general obligation bonds. Any discussion on this topic? All right, in that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you. And we do have a planned sale date of April 27th. That is our date right now to go to market on the sale of these bonds. I think we will close on May 11th.
Our, our next item is scheduled to be executive session, but it occurred to me we did not have this session because this is our work session or whatever it's called, a superintendent update, but I thought there might be some things going on that before we leave, he would want to, he would want to talk about. Anything, any updates?
Okay, well, it's nice to be wanted, I guess. No, we, if you got in your car yesterday morning going to work, which you did, and I didn't get my call from Wayne Bolden, I get it every year about the traffic's backed up all the way down to the Tarlington Talkington property or whatever.
Because I stayed home.
Okay, well, there you go. You missed it. But I certainly noticed the uptick in, in traffic on my way to work. And I'm sure most citizens did. But when you think about it, I, I, we've done a lot this year. I don't think we've had the first day of school in March before, but we've done now, we've done that. It was like the first day of school all over.
But I gotta believe that that was a really exciting problem to have for a lot of people that we had traffic issues. Hot dog, we had traffic issues.
Well, and, and what typically happens, as you recall, each August when this kicks in, Monday is awful, Tuesday's a little better, Wednesday's a little better. So probably the people who are going to Charlotte, they don't have kids in school, they had no clue what the reason for the traffic was. Hmm, school's back in, I'm going to leave at 6:30 or I'm going to leave at 10 o'clock. So I think it gets better on through the week. But, so that was yesterday, we welcomed our face to face middle and high school students back to full five day. Based on CDC DEHAC guidance, continued decline in COVID-19 cases in our area and schools and the implementation of our safety protocols, which we've talked ad nauseam about, the shields and the, and the mask. Most, most schools celebrated this day similar to the first day of school. We saw schools with balloons, signs and other positive messages for their students. Transportation times here worked hard for every situation we could foresee. We even added a couple of double routes, I believe, at the middle in particular. And, and we'll, going forward, we'll, we'll look at that. You know, it's like the first, again, just, just put your mindset on first week of school where I guess some buses may be more crowded than you thought based on, and you learn that and you adjust. And usually it takes about two weeks at the first of August for you to get it, to hit the sweet spot, I think. Now, we, we thought, you know, we planned for every situation we could foresee. Obviously, we, there are going to be situations that you may know as board members that I don't know about. And, and we'll deal with those. I have full confidence in, for example, lunches. We, the tables, some of the tables haven't arrived yet. We ordered extra tables. We've got some schools that are eating, doing a mixture of eating in classrooms. I have every confidence in the world that our principals, and every situation is different. Every school has a different number of lunches. Every school has a different number of kids. But our principals are masters at figuring this out. So I think we give them the same amount of grace period, we'll, we'll get that solved. The classes that are overloaded or there are situations that we are having difficulty meeting the six feet or, or excuse me, the three feet with the shields, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that. So as I speak tonight, I know it's not perfect. I do know that we, we got off to a good start. I think like Michelle says, I certainly, certainly there, there are people who have questions, but I think overwhelmingly there, there's excitement and, and not that it matters. I mean, it's not a voting situation, but I think for the most part, we've, we've planned for most contingencies. Not, not every one, I'm not going to say we have, but we're, but we'll get there. That was the thinking, I, I think in going back today or yesterday is that this two or three week period before the break would, would allow us time to, to do that. Now, you know, and we'll monitor the numbers. There is the, the chance of a couple of weeks after the break, if, if things don't go well, we'll, we'll deal with that as far as the numbers. You know, some people think that's going to be another period like after Thanksgiving or after Christmas. And we'll deal with that if that's the case. I think we're, we're able to pivot better now because we've been there and done that. We couldn't say that in August, I don't think. But we've shown that we can go virtual, we can go back to hybrid. We, you know, we can, we can pivot to whatever the situation calls for. I, I just want to stop a minute and before I say, and talk about a very positive situation with the clinic. And we thank Kristy Spears for her volunteer erism on that. And, and that has really worked out for us well. We were able, because of our involvement and Kristy's willingness to, to volunteer, to be a one day manager, which you're there every day, but you had to volunteer one of four people, I believe, in the area. We, our thinking behind that was we would someday get our teachers vaccinated. And lo and behold, we were able to do, to do just that for the people who wanted it. So real excitement, I think we ran through 550 or so the other day. We had already been, run through maybe 200 or 300. Teachers don't have to tell us if they've been vaccinated or not, but we, we, we're keeping up with records as best we can for contact tracing purposes, right, Joe? In other words, we would need for you to tell us if you had the vaccine, so you wouldn't have to quarantine. So, so those are all positives. I have a sneaky feeling, we'll know in the next couple of weeks, a better idea what our numbers are. But I have a feeling that it's very positive as far as percent. But I can't say what that number is right now. I just don't have it. So we've got another day scheduled. I think it's the 26th, right? For the second shot?
Yes, so important to note, because they, you know, the, the kids are in school five days this week, but next week will only be four days in person, right? Because of next Friday is the day that we're going to have the teachers come back and get their second shots.
So plenty of, plenty of excitement, plenty of positives, but certainly some challenges still out there. Just for the record, I think Clover went back March the 8th full. We, we went back yesterday, the 15th. Rock Hill's going back Monday, the 22nd. I think I read where the whole state of North Carolina's got to go back sometime in April. Is that, if you keep up with the Charlotte news, I think they, it's a mandate. in April, is that, if you keep up with the Charlotte news, I think they, it's a mandate by the state, and I'm not sure if that's full, full bore or the whole.
Yeah, I don't think that's five days a week.
Okay, well, I.
I mean, they're, they're slowly coming in.
So that's kinda the nickel preview. I'll be glad to answer questions, take questions, I don't know if I can answer them all.
Well, I don't think it's really a question, but I know when we were here two weeks ago, the, the other things that you're still working on, right, still trying to figure out what might happen for graduation, still trying to figure out, you know, is there prom, is there not prom? I, I don't, I don't, I don't expect you to have those answers, but I think it's important to note that those questions are, in fact, in, in the hopper.
In fact, we're very, very close to announcing the plan for graduation and for whatever the, the event called prom or senior event, whatever that's gonna be called, we're very close to figuring that out. So.
And I'm just excited, cuz I read all the clippings, and they say, oh, so-and-so district is planning for a teacher vaccination, you know, over the next four weeks, and I'm thinking.
I think we were actually ahead of anybody.
I'll get with it.
Yep, very exciting. All right, anything else for, for the good of the group?
I don't think so.
If not, we are.
Anything, staff, anything?
The only thing is, I'm a Miss Tuck, it was 310, it's 310 students that had registered, so far, we're putting them virtual academy.
And we still got like 10 days left in the registration window.
Okay.
I, I think we were projecting somewhere between 500 and 800, I, you know, something, something, 600 or 800.
All right, well, we are in need of an executive session to receive personnel recommendations. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to go into executive session?
All right, with that being unanimous consent, we are in executive session. Thanks, everybody, for joining us, see you in two weeks.